Good afternoon. I'd like to call the June 9, 2015 City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Okay, there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Nope, okay. And public comment, I have a number of speaker slips here. We'll start with Ms. Zeitzoff, to be followed by Tim Warner. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council Members. I'm Ms. Zeitzoff. I'm here representing the Coalition Against Gun Violence. I'm here to speak on the very anticipated gun buyback that we're having on Saturday, this coming Saturday. I want to thank the council and the police department, Chief Sanchez, and Sergeant Harwood in particular, for allowing this to occur again this weekend. I'm here for a personal reason also. My seventeen-year-old son was murdered in 1992 by gun, and it happens that I was serving on the Malibu City Council, the first council at that time. Since then, I've been very active in trying to take guns off the streets, from those who don't belong, to a good group who should have a gun. I would like to read something first. It's a little more organized for me. It says, "Please join in supporting Coalition Against Gun Violence's second annual gun buyback on June 13th, this Saturday, from 8:00 to 12:00 noon, at Earl Warren Showgrounds." Last year, people came from many areas of the Central Coast. We collected 239 firearms, including 108 handguns, which included 84 rifles, 41 shotguns, and six assault weapons. The gift certificates were to Vons Market, $100 for a handgun, and $200 gift certificate for an assault weapon. And the turn-ins are anonymous. You do not give your name. One of the reasons for having a gun buyback in a community is the following. Why would someone have a gun that they no longer want? Perhaps they inherited the gun, or no longer use or want the gun in their home. Additionally, many people's circumstances change over time, so they may now wish to remove firearm access from children, or other family members, elderly with dementia, individuals with mental illness, those at risk of suicide, teenagers with poor judgment, people involved in emotional conflicts like abuse and relationship breakups.
You need to wind up, please.
Yes. And I want to-
You're way over your two minutes.
I'm sorry. I would like to invite everybody in the community to bring a gun on next Saturday, Earl Warren Showgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Warner will be followed by Scott Wentz, and then the final speaker will be Dr. Robert Johns.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here regarding the illegal vacation rentals that exist in our community. This morning, I Googled VRBO and came up with 911 listings in our community. Last week, went to the Finance Department. We are receiving bed taxes, which is great, from 346, so there's a deficit of 560-some-odd that aren't paying bed taxes. I know we're in a budget problem, and if the illegal rentals could be pushed aside, the hotels will pay these bed taxes. So, you pull 1,000 beds and fill 1,000 beds in the hotels, you're going to be plus over a million in the bed taxes by getting vacation rentals out of our residential neighborhoods. And I know this is coming to council next week, and just want to urge the attorney and maybe work with the district attorney to find a way to go to VRBO and Airbnb and make sure they post addresses, and so we can work with them to get rid of the illegal units and make the legal units conforming and paying bed taxes and not disrupting our shortage of housing. This is graduation weekend. We've got about 1,500 kids graduating high school this week that'll start to look for housing. We've got 5,000 at UCSB, 500 at Westmont, quite a few City College kids that are going to be looking for housing, and our vacancy factor right now is .5 percent. You throw in another 900 units, that'll free up a lot of housing, that'll take maybe 900 trips off the highway commuting up from Vincher or Lompoke. This is something that needs to be addressed, and will be a big benefit for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And this item will be up in two weeks, not next week, on the 23rd at 6:00 PM. Okay. Scott Wentz, and then Robert Johns, and then Jeff Bard. Scott Wentz is first, Mr. Johns. Mr. John, Scott Wentz is before you.
Oh, okay. I have a little hearing-
That's all right. You're next. You're right after Mr. Wentz.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Wentz representing Cars Are Basic. Saw an interesting item on the ABR this week. They're building a new, or replacing a new bridge over on the 1200 block on the east side, and within that design factor was a bulbout. We've asked the city of Santa Barbara to supply the information proving that bulbouts make pedestrians safer. There are no such studies. Your own staff has said, "We have no such studies." What are you spending $45,000, $50,000 for, for bulbouts? Bulbouts create a barrier to bicyclists, forcing them out towards the automobiles. That makes it dangerous for bicyclists. And then the other thing that was noted in there, and Mr. Francis here, and I have no problem with this. We consulted with the Bicycle Coalition. The Bicycle Coalition has no problem with this plan. Well, this organization's been around for 17 years. We have a physical engineer who builds freeways and roads and bridges. Your staff has never consulted with us, not once. Has the Bicycle Coalition and COAST and other organizations become part of the city of Santa Barbara? That's not right. Something has to change. Bulbouts, unless you can prove them, have to stop, and this consulting with other organizations without giving due notice to other groups like ourselves that have the professional staff has to stop.
Sorry for the mix-up, Madam Chair. Now, I'm having a little confusion here. The environmentalists, do they believe everything that goes on? I mean, there's a real quagmire going on in this town right now. Right now, the supervisors are voting, and I'm sorry to bring supervisors issues here, I'm sure you want to hear county and city issues only, but supervisors are voting right now, saying that the planning commission, the planning commission, they're blaming the planning commission for the trucks that are rolling with the oil, when it's the supervisors themselves who can just say, "Hey, we don't need a planning..." We stopped those trucks from rolling. We can stop those trucks. But they're trying to say to the environmentalists, you know, it's going to be, it's the planning commission. The planning commission is at fault. It's at fault. And I'm wondering, you know, do environmentalists believe all this? I mean, it's obvious that is, that the Democratic majority environmentalists are trying to put off the blame for the trucks rolling on 101, the oil trucks, on the planning commission. And it's actually they who should be making the decision themselves. So, why are they trying to shift blame? Obviously, because they don't want the environmentalists to see, the environmentalists to see that they are stopping, they can stop those trucks. See, the reason why those trucks are rolling is that they get money. The city, the council, the supervisors get money for every truck of oil rolling. They get money. So, they're not going to stop those trucks from rolling. So, I mean, if there was one person running for the 24th who could just stand up and say, you know, "What's going on here, supervisors? What's going on?" If there's one person who had the, am I over time?
You're at your time. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, all right. But you get the point here on what I'm trying to say. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here to suggest that you recommend to our state Assemblyman a yes vote on SB 277. It's today in the Assembly as we speak. The Health Committee is deliberating. Pastor Cox made a call to the Lutheran Legislative Liaison in Sacramento, and was informed they believe it will pass, but we do need every Assembly vote. In the past week, the news has pointed out an anti-vaccine mom has stating now that she feels hoodwinked by the anti-vaccine cult because her little kid is currently in the intensive care unit with diphtheria, the first case in 29 years in the nation of Spain. And in today's news, we find out eight other kids got infected with diphtheria at his school camp. Another anti-vaccine sucker that was hoodwinked by the anti-vaccine cult is a mom whose seven kids developed pertussis. Also, in the past week's news, the Mideast Respiratory Syndrome, formerly confined to the Mideast, has now jumped via jet travel to South Korea, and thousands of people in South Korea are now vaccinated, and many, many schools are closed in South Korea. This is the kind of thing that can hit any community at any time. The pertussis incidence has been spiking in recent years. I heard 18,000 mentioned, don't quote me on the exact figure, but, you know, whooping cough is something we shouldn't have in our schools, so please help people understand the importance of vaccination, and SB 277. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item two, adoption of ordinance for amendment to airline terminal solar photovoltaic power purchase agreement for solar project at 500 Fowler Road, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the airport director to execute a first amendment to the power purchase agreement, City Agreement Number 24975, between the City of Santa Barbara and Sun Edison Origination III LLC, to amend the site description to reduce the expected annual output of the system and to reduce the energy purchase rate for energy delivered. Item three, adoption of ordinance approving a joint powers agreement for wastewater treatment in the Mission Canyon area, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the 2015 Joint Powers Agreement for Wastewater Collection, Treatment, and Disposal for County Service Area 12 in the Mission Canyon area between the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Santa Barbara. Item four, introduction of ordinance for extension of Fire Management Memorandum of Understanding to June 30, 2018, recommending that council ratify a three-year extension to the 2012 to 2015 labor agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Fire Managers Association. By introduction and subsequent adoption of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Ordinance Number 5260, the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Fire Managers Association, and extending the term of the agreement through June 30, 2018. Item five, records destruction for Community Development Department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Community Development Department and the Administration, Housing and Human Services, and Building and Safety Divisions. Item six, acceptance of meter easements for 513 Garden Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting an agreement for access to water meters and sub-meters, and grant of easement for 513 Garden Street. And item 10, Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Assessment Rates for Fiscal Year 2016, public hearing, including recommendation B that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara fixing and assessing the Parking and Business Improvement Area Assessment Rates for Fiscal Year 2016, and confirming approval of the Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Assessment Report for Fiscal Year 2016.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to have to step down on item 10 because I have a business that pays into the PBIA system.
Okay. Any other items you need to pull off the consent calendar? Okay, is there a motion for item 10?
Don't move.
Madam Mayor, I had a question about item 10.
Okay. Do you want us to get a second first?
Second.
Okay, what's the question?
That's the, right. I wanted to ask Mr. Allen if there were any last-minute protests. Sometimes they come last minute.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Allen.
Mayor, Council, Browning, Allen, Transportation Manager, we have not received any protests regarding this coming assessment for the PBIA.
Okay. And how you notified people was by letter? Everyone, everyone got a letter? Is that how it works?
With the notes of intent, we've had a hearing before the Parking Committee, and they had the notes of intent last month before this council, and then we published an ad in the newspaper advising of the intent to levy. We're only required to send out notices to the businesses if there's going to be a change in the assessment, under the assessment law. So, because we weren't making any recommended changes to assessment, we're not required to notice them in writing because their assessments remain as they were in the previous fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item 10. All in favor? Aye.
Staying.
And one abstention. Mr. Rouse. Russ is saying yes. Anything else on the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the balance of the-
Second.
Moved in second, the balance of the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, move on to item number 14.
Request from councilmembers Hotchkiss and Francisco regarding bicycle traffic statistics.
Okay, this is a request from two councilmembers, so we'll let them have the first word on this. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this is actually a very simple request and a simple idea. The city of Santa Barbara has been doing bicycle master plans for 40 years, and during that time, our source of statistical information about bicycle traffic in the city has been provided by the Bicycle Coalition or its antecedents, but cycling enthusiasts, and who are willing to go out there and put in the hours counting bicycles. I believe, and Mr. Hotchkiss believes as well, I'm sure he'll have something to say about this, that it makes sense, given the amount of money we're spending on this bicycle master plan, and given the importance of the bicycle master plan to our overall transportation planning, it makes sense to have an objective count of bicycle traffic. So, what we're proposing is that we spend, and this was based on an estimate that Mr. Hotchkiss got from a traffic engineering company, that we spend up to $20,000 to do a traffic study of bicycles by a traffic engineering company, and this will be, this will give us an objective basis for measuring bicycle traffic in Santa Barbara, which we really haven't had before. And this is no, this is not a, nothing disrespectful intended towards the Bicycle Coalition or any other organization, but it just makes sense not to have an advocacy organization doing this count. So, that's our recommendation. Mr. Hotchkiss, you have anything to add to this?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Francisco, Madam Mayor. My hope in this is to reconcile what have been perceived, I think misperceived perhaps, as two different sides. The informal study that I did is, I've reported here, and it I think has been reported in the paper, is that almost everyone agrees we ought to make things safer, and while not reducing car access, but safer for bicycling. And to do that, one of the things we should come together and agree on is, what is our actual population, so that in the future, thanks to the improvements we make, we can measure it again and see how we're doing. Have we improved? Do we need to do more? Should we do it differently? So, accurate numbers are really important to measure our progress in the future. We need to, as it were, grade ourselves. Yes, we have to spend a little bit of money, but I think it would be well worth it, and I think that, I think people, I look forward to hearing the public comments on this, but I think concur. Also, we have a really remarkable new system that the city has already got that can track where bicycles go, or bicyclists go in town, and I think, am I correct, you all will have a demonstration of that, or at least be able to put up something on the board here so we can see it?
Yeah, we'll have it. Just give us a moment.
Okay.
Having technical difficulties.
Okay, all right. That works. In any case, you'll be pleasantly surprised, this is a, an app that goes on any phone, particularly I think it's iPhone, but others, and maybe Android also, that will record, as it were, where you've traveled, and the map that you're going to see shows where the principal areas of bicycle travel are now. And the reason that's important, I think, I hope everybody will agree, is so that we can plan in the future what really should be a, is it almost dedicated or near-dedicated bike street, that is to say, one where we expect to see bikes, and what the others are not, and to try to channel bicycle riders onto those streets so that they feel safer, and that car drivers, auto drivers know to expect to see people riding bikes in the street. One of the principal things that came up from the study that I did informal was that there were folks that said, "Gee, I would like to ride, or I would like to let my children ride, but I don't feel right now that it's safe enough, so if we felt safer, we could have more participants." So, that's the purpose of all of this, the bike count, the app study that we're going to show you now, and the bicycle master plan. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, Rob, you ready to go?
Strava is a, an app that is on any smartphone, and what people are using it for are for tracking their workouts. It started as a bike tracker, so, and what it does is, it's very popular, you can get it in watch form as well. What it does is it tracks your rides on a map, your elevation, when you did it, how fast you were going, the stops, has all the data in it. And what you're looking at on the screen here is a full year of Strava data, which shows where the rides in America happened. Why is this important? Well, Strava called us about eight or nine months ago and said, "Hey, you know, we got something you may be interested in." And we said, "What's that?" And they said, "Well, we, we have all the data of all the rides in Santa Barbara that are happening." We're like, "Wow, let us see it." So, they directed us to this map, and I'll just, I'll just zoom in a little bit. Now, you could see LA on the right, Santa Barbara on the left. Zooming in a little bit more, this is Galita Carpenteria, Santa Barbara. You could see the rides, you know, Gibraltar rides, like a heavy recreational ride right there. And then zooming into our town, you can, you can begin to see what are the most popular routes. Now, one of our first questions to them was, "Well, gosh, you know, that's really neat." We, our programs about congestion management, we're really interested in rides to work because we have a congestion management program to reduce automobile use, to, to make sure our city stays congestion-free, and so what is recreation riders, what can, what can we do this for? Well, they said, "Well, actually, a lot of your riders, 35% of this population, is actually going to work." And we're like, "Oh, that's interesting. How can you tell that?" Well, most rides that are recreation in nature, they start and end in the same place, whereas rides to work start in one place, end in another in the morning, and then they go back in the evening. So, it's, they actually can pick up the, the rides that are to work. So, wow, we said, "Now, okay, now you got our attention. We're interested." And so, we, we have purchased in, with the county for $4,000 as our share, we've purchased all the real-time rides in 2000, what's the date on it? 2015 and into the next year. So, for a whole year, we're going to be able to see this real-time. In other words, every person who uses Strava every day will know every ride, and we can, we can look at this data based on rides to work, or One Direction routes. I mean, there's many different ways to look at this. So, when we heard that Councilmember Hotchkiss and Councilmember Francisco were thinking about this, we got a meeting with them and let them know, you know, what we're doing. Because frankly, when you do one point in time count, it really doesn't give us a lot of information, and who knows what happened on that day, in terms of conditions, and then you repeat that one time sometime in the future, really not that accurate or cannot be accurate. Whereas this kind of tool could be, and so the things we're thinking about how this could be helpful, is that if we did some sort of a promotional advertisement and said, "Get your Strava on. Be counted by the City of Santa Barbara for your use of your bike," and we really pushed people to use this, I'm sure the Bicycle Coalition would be helpful to get their, that message out, then we could hopefully begin to see more people using this and find out how many people are on the road. And then we can also do a poll for specific routes, and poll people who are actually on the road as to whether they're using Strava or not, to begin to get closer to another number, which is how many are the total bike rides out there, people that aren't on Strava, and interpolate that number. Again, it wouldn't be extremely accurate, but it would be a really, really good estimate of that data. Just zooming in a little bit more so you can see kind of the nuances of this, now you're seeing, this is Mission, actually, Mission is a pretty popular route, surprisingly. Modoc, you can see, is pretty popular, and then you can see where our, our one-way couplets show up, people coming under the Mission interchange and getting on the one-way couplet, which are heavier than Delevina and Chapala, but people still using those streets. So, this is, this is the kind of thing that we were talking about with them. And then the other thing that we mentioned that could be a low cost, if somebody was very interested in a point-in-time count, hopefully by the end of this year, we will be counting 50 intersections, our top 50 for automobile, to measure our congestion and recalibrate our traffic model. For about 10% more, which could be somewhere 2,500 to 7,000, somewhere in that range, we could also count bikes at that time, at those intersections. But again, that's just one day, for one year, a point in time, versus this is a little bit more dynamic.
Russ?
Good question, Mr. Dayton. You said Mission is a popular biking route? I mean, that's, that sounds like future temporary Santa Barbers. I mean, that's, that's an amazingly dangerous place to be riding. So, that brings to question, now, this is tracked electronically, is that like a Fitbit kind of thing, or reports out, or is that, is that the idea?
Councilmember Rouse, it's tracked on your phone. So, what you do is you, you would load the Strava app, and then when you're going to go on a ride, you tell it, "I'm beginning my ride," and it starts tracking you.
All right. So, so it wouldn't be like you'd forget that your phone was in your pocket when you got in your car and drove. I'm just amazed at the Mission data, because that, you know, I don't even know where a bike is even going to go on that street.
Yeah, we were very surprised to see that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. So, Mr. Dayton, I appreciate your enthusiasm about Strava, but who is on it? I ride my bike, and I'm not on it. I mean, I don't ride it as much as some people, but, so what, what do you know, before we start questioning the statistics that came out of the other method?
Councilmember Mario, you're right. And there'd be lots of people who, lots of Santa Barbers who are riding their bike who wouldn't be on it, so.
But do we have a sense of who, how many people are being counted through Strava now?
Yeah, it's about 5,000 in the city of Santa Barbara.
That's impressive.
But, but, but again, we would, you know, it would be dependent upon, we would have to ramp that up. We would have to, we'd have to tell people out there, you know, to do, to get your Strava on, or, you know, here's, here's how you'd be counted. And so, yeah, we, we'd have to improve that number to make sure that people are doing it.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if there's someone in the audience that can talk to us about the counts that have been done, because if we're talking about hiring a professional traffic engineer counting bikes firm, maybe the Bicycle Coalition did the same, maybe they're not ready, or they're here to defend their numbers, but if we're talking about statistics, we have to talk about methods. Is anyone in the audience that would, Madam Mayor, is it appropriate to ask that question, or they're-
They have speaker slips, so they can include that in their comments, and if they don't, ask them afterwards. So, why don't we just get through the questions up here first, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay. I just want them to have enough time to answer the question.
Yeah.
We're so strict on our two minutes, and maybe there's a lot to say.
Well, you can ask a follow-up question if they run out and your question wasn't answered.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Can you help me understand what the city does for automobile counts, and so that, because it seems to me that it ought to be the same, and there ought to be a system that just tracks mobility, and that's essentially, I think, what we're trying to do, is to understand these things in context. So, understanding what you do currently on a regular basis to do traffic counts, would it help me understand this in context? it help me understand this in context?
Councilmember Hart, very interesting question. We haven't thought a lot about it. When, when we do automobile counts, what we're trying to do is we're trying to replicate the standard behavior in a day. And most people are staying at their jobs, you know, those workplaces, even if they change jobs, that workplace keeps that job location. Although origins, where you start from, does change. And so what we do with the model is we, we do the counts, and then we do an exercise where the model first guesses of all the land use, how many trips are being generated at that location? And then it, and then it measured, measured against the counts we have to make sure it's accurate. Usually, it's a lot higher for our city because the trip generations at businesses are much lower in the city of Santa Barbara. In other words, there's much more use of alternative modes. So it, what it does, it, it changes the volume and adjusts the land uses to have lower trip rates, and then validates it. And then, and that's our standard pulse, if you will, for, you know, our daily pulse. So in transportation planning, that's the tool we're looking at, and that lives on because we can kind of replicate that again with every land use we add, which is what we're measuring, right? Is when we add a land use, what's the impact to the system?
So the counts you do are just to calibrate the model?
That's correct.
And then you tweak the model, understanding the local reality of trip generation based on our land uses? And is there a step that you do to calibrate the bicycle and pedestrian components of the model?
Well, we haven't done this, that kind of sophistication. We haven't really been interested in bicycle counts. And the reason we haven't, like, the Bicycle Coalition's been counting for years, and I think you've heard me say, you know, we're really not interested in that data. Why, why is that? Well, it's the, it's the gross population of bike riders, and we're interested in, in really understanding how, what portion of the, of the trips go to work by bike. And the American Community Survey does a, does that for free. And we can, we can capture that. And it's not very accurate for any one year, but when you, when you put five years together, it's very accurate, within a half percent. So there just hasn't been a reason for us to do that. And, and we already know that the, the policies of the city of Santa Barbara are to make bicycling safe and, and accommodate it. So we've been doing that right along without the need for knowing, well, how many people are biking.
So I guess the question then is to my colleagues, what is the point of this, the two, Councilmember Francisco and Hotchkiss, what is the point of doing this? In that, in light of that point from staff, why are we doing this?
Well, I was just next going to call on Mr. Francisco, so go ahead.
I understand, you know, we had a discussion ahead of time with Rob about this. And I understand that staff has traditionally not been interested in these numbers. I'm interested in these numbers. I think, I can't imagine how we can do sound transportation planning. I mean, it's fun to, to have a model and tweak it, but I don't understand how we do sound transportation planning if we don't know what the traffic is. And as I said, I mean, I've, I have my own precious copy of the original Bicycle Master Plan, and it was based on volunteer studies of people standing on intersections for several times, not just one day. And I don't know how frequently we would have to measure traffic to get an accurate overall picture, but I think we should figure out what that is and do it. Now, I understand from our discussion that part of the problem is that some of the methods that we use to measure automobile traffic don't work for bikes. So I assume, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dayton, is it only the, where we're doing camera recording and then going back and counting that we can get an accurate bike count?
That's one way of doing it, is they videotape the intersection and then go back and count in a little bit, like four times fast, it's just less labor that way.
Right.
Sometimes you actually do a manual count at the intersection. Both are watching and counting.
Right.
And that's, that's traditionally how bike counts have been done in the past.
And is there any other way to count bikes as, as opposed to cars?
Well, as we, as you know, we put loop and we, camera detectors for cars, and we count cars that way. We can do a similar facility. San Francisco has a number of these in the ground, they're about $10,000 a facility. And you put it in the stream where you know bikes are, and you automatic, you automated count those bikes. That's another way of counting.
Uh huh, a very expensive way of counting. You mentioned this 50 intersection count. Is that going to be a video count?
It, it may or may not be. It was last time. It seems to be cheaper for the folks who are in Los Angeles, who are primarily doing these counts, to send up a guy who puts places a bunch of cameras and then bring, rather than bringing the whole labor force up. So I would imagine they would choose that way again.
And so what you're saying is for a marginal cost above whatever we were already paying, we could also get bicycle counts from those same videos?
That's correct.
Okay. That sounds like a good idea.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to reiterate that although the staff may not think it's important, there are an awful lot of people in the general populace that do, and that's what we're responding to. So whatever, whether we do what Mr. Francisco just said, or something independent of that, I do think it's absolutely vital, Mr. Hart, to come up with something. And everybody agrees on them, we can all move together on the bicycle plan. Because the bicycle plan and the safety doesn't just depend on bicycle riders and coast, depends on everybody, drivers too. So we really want them all on board, and I think this would be really helpful in doing that.
Mr. Hart?
To that point, I think that's, this has been very helpful. Now, I think I understand this better. And it sounds like, you know, doing what Mr. Dayton suggested, the $2,500 additional cost to enhance the vehicle counts at these 50 specific intersections, that, I understand that, that, you know, that seems like a reasonable thing. That's different than what I think was originally proposed, perhaps, or a variation on that. So I think this might help the public, you know, speaking to this too. Now we know what we're talking about. So, thank you.
So to be clear, what the request now is, is it, is it the 2,500 enhancement, or is it something else?
I think this is something to talk about, but I think the reason we chose $20,000 as a number is because Mr. Hotchkiss spoke with an engineering firm that said that is what they would charge to do the work. And this was new information that we got from Mr. Dayton.
All right.
And just to be, just to be clear, I don't have a quote, I don't have a, I haven't gotten an official estimate, but it was 10%. What I was quoted was 10% more than our counts. I just don't know the total number of our counts.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to move to public comment right now, and then we'll start with Sam Franklin, be followed by Scott Wentz. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Well, first of all, we're, I'm with the Bicycle Coalition, as you might know. We're glad actually that this issue has been raised, because we also agree that good data is crucial for long-term planning policy. And the data that we currently have that only shows commute statistics from the American Census is lacking if we, if we want to get an idea of just how many people are really cycling out there. At the same time, having said that, it should be pretty obvious that bicycle use is growing. Between the US Census data, the Strava data, the AAA data, our own bike counts, the increase in bicycle tourism, bike sales all across the nation, there's no doubt that there's an overall trend that bicycling is growing. I just want to make that very clear. However, again, it would be really useful to get more detailed data that, that assists us in this decision-making, especially with the Bike Master Plan being created. Leading up to this meeting, one of the ideas that I really wanted to suggest is I've had some talks with other jurisdictions and agencies, and we're all having the same problem, a lack of concise data. I know that SB CAG is looking at data for their active transportation plan, the county, Galida is needing data for ATP grants. So one of the suggestions that I would like to offer is look at modern bike counting equipment. Some use GPS, others use the touch sensitive strips, there's infrared solutions. I think there's a very good possibility of pooling money together, working with jurisdictions within the county, buying equipment that gives us data that we can collect on any given moment throughout the year and throughout multiple years. I think that's a much wiser way of spending our money than just a one-off count. Thank you for your consideration.
Scott Wentz will be followed by Dan Fishman, or Fishboo.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Wentz representing Cars Are Basic. I'm going to take that hat off for a second. I spent most of my adult life as a research scientist. And I can tell you point-blank that most of what you're being given here as counting procedures doesn't hold water from a research scientist's point of view. One of the top people in the American College of Sports Medicine, I was just at their meeting last week, international conference where I presented papers, is Walt, I won't use his last name. We used to go out drinking, 1975, and he's on the opposite side of where I am. But he also agrees that the actual counting method is absolutely 100% necessary. And the point being raised here is not the people that are riding from 10:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, it's the people that are riding during commute times. Because this item is about getting rid of commute traffic. You don't have 5,000 people riding at commute time in the city of Santa Barbara. Video time is the only way of tracking bicyclists properly. I've talked with a number of people in the, in the biomechanics area, where they are tracking people on tracks. They can do it. You take the video, you track a number of people, and you see whether or not they're down at the, the next intersection. So you can't count them again. Remember, I was one of the people in 1974 on that bought into the bicycle thing, and I found by 1980, I couldn't do it, because I became an adult. And I couldn't run my businesses, I couldn't do what I needed to do on a bicycle. And that's part of the problem. And I would love to discuss with you some of the ways we've done bicycle counts, one of which Councilman Hart agreed with, but I'm running out of time. Thank you.
Dan, and you'll have to pronounce your last name for me, and then Ed France.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dan Fishbein. After graduating, since you don't all know me, from UCSB in '73, I attended medical school and received postgraduate training in internal medicine, infectious disease, public health, and epidemiology, and spent most of my career at the Centers for Disease Control before returning to lovely Santa Barbara. There's a lot we can do to improve bicycle safety in this community, but as you all know, we are going to need to balance out what we do with limited resources. In order to make a thoughtful policy for a safe and convenient roadway system for all users, we need public health data, as well as the market share data that you've been talking about. You'll have to decide what kind of evidence you really need regarding bicycling, and I'm not sure that that's been made clear. I've been following these discussions on, on video before today. For example, it's true that both Santa Barbara, that Santa Barbara has a high number of collisions, but a large number of bicyclists. And if you do that ratio, we're one of the safer cities in California, actually, when you do these ratios. So the statistics are very complicated. This is not child's play, not that you are in, sort of stuff. It's really complicated stuff. We have a large number of cyclists, and we don't, and because of this large number of cyclists, there seems to be a phenomena going on here called safety in numbers. Nobody knows exactly why it works, but our rate of accidents or collisions has been going down over time. It still could be much lower, but it's not horrific. Regarding the number of cyclists, it's my professional opinion that it'll be impossible to improve on the quality of the data in the American Community Survey, which is designed to give communities not only bicycle information, but all sorts of other information for any of you who've used it to help plan investments and services. The American Community Survey is mandatory, can't say no. And it's completely statistically valid. It represents the people in the city. Regarding bicycling, the proportion of people who bike to work is all that it measures.
You need to wind up, please.
The number of proportion of people who cycle less frequently needs to be measured also.
Ed France and Barry.
Question if I could, sir.
Go ahead.
So is that measurement of cyclists, you were talking about bicycles, is that, how is that done? Is that done voluntarily by people?
No, it's, it's actually part of the census, and it's required by law that you respond if they knock on your door or call you on the phone. And so it is truly, it is truly population-based. It is the only thing that's going to give you the figures for the number of Santa Barbians that bicycle, but only bicycle to work. But there are techniques, I don't want to go off the plan here, where we can do some ratios that would estimate people who bicycle for reasons other than work.
Are you saying that every bicyclist gets a knock on the door or a telephone call?
It's, 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 no, it's not bicyclists, it's you and me, any of us. It's a rolling survey, it's done every year. They question a certain number of people in every community in the country about all sorts of things. There's one question about bicycles on there, all, where you work, what kind of work you do, how many people in the house, all sorts of things.
Okay.
But you have to respond to it. So it's truly representative of people in the city, and that's its, its strength. It varies, because the sample size is small, you're going to see some variation year to year.
Well, that's going to change from year to year, too.
It does.
I mean, I could be a bicyclist this year and not next, huh?
Right. But it's measuring each year how many bicyclists are. You may get called one year and not another year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ed France and Barry Remus is waving his two minutes. Okay, so, Mr. France, you have up to four minutes, and then the final speaker will be Tom Woodrow.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for the time. Thank you, Barry, as well. So first off, I'm here representing the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, and I am proud to say we hit a milestone in May. I'm here representing 1,000, over 1,000, I think, or 1,015 paid dues members of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition. We estimate that about half that, about 500 of those members, based on zip codes, are city of Santa Barbara residents, as was sort of called into question in the public comment. And also is a legitimate question right now in front of us is, what has the, the role of the Bicycle Coalition been? We for, since 1991, have represented those bicycling and interested in bicycling in Santa Barbara County. We receive feedback each year, especially with our BC Centro program, our bike education in the schools, hanging out and parking bikes outside of every bowl show at the Santa Barbara Bowl, doing those types of activities. We interact face to face with some, something between 3,000 and 5,000 area residents each year. We get a lot of feedback, and we want to talk to staff with our feedback. We want to talk to you with our feedback. We publish our, our findings. I want to talk about the count that, that we did for the last 15 years. We did an intersection count. Now, with this all-volunteer count, we did not have the professional statistician preparation that would have been ideal. In other words, our count could be better, our margin of error could have been improved. What we're drawing from this information could certainly be better. However, at the time, there was nothing. This conversation is so important, and I really appreciate Councilmembers Hotchkiss and Francisco for bringing this up, because effectively, there is a shift happening in the country where bicycling is not just for kids anymore. Bicycling is not a toy, it's a legitimate means of transportation, and people are using it to get places. And people who run some of the bigger companies in Santa Barbara amongst them. It's a legitimate form of transportation that needs to be safe, and we need to use the same scientific process that we'd use in transportation planning, because it's a form of transportation planning. And I applaud the concept of including, for the first time in our top 50 vehicular counts, the bike count in with that as well. I am so jazzed to, to have this opportunity to geek out on the data, because we haven't been able to do that enough in the past. And as a result, some of the earlier bicycle projects haven't always been the best projects. And in order to make our system safe and accessible fast, because we're falling behind other leading cities, we need to exactly step up our game academically and really see, look like, like at Mission. Why is that happening? Well, I can tell you as a cyclist, it's awkward to take most of the alternative routes. So especially these faster Strava cyclists, who are a small segment of the cycling population, and you got to account for that, you got to take it with a grain of salt. So these are the type of conversations that, that we want to have. I do want to say that it's important when we talk about legitimate stakeholders, and we talk about public process, that nonprofits do this great thing where they publish their board of directors, they publish their finances, they, they make clear who they are and what they're about. And the Bike Coalition And the Bike Coalition, we've shared our data, you can see who our board of directors is, you can see our 990s. That's not, there are other stakeholders that may come before council that are not in that same situation. They do not publish 990s, they do not have a named board of directors. We have to, we have to weigh that comparatively.
You need to wind up. You're at your four minutes.
Thank you, Frank Hotchkiss, for the concept, establishing a baseline. We are going to make improvements to this system, and we want to see the results. So great, let's, let's get some great data now so we have a baseline, and as we make these improvements in the coming years, we'll see how we're making bicycling better for all. Thank you.
Tom Woodrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I had a bike at UCSB when I was there for six years, undergrad and graduate school. I used it quite a bit. I don't use it so much anymore. I urge you not to spend the money on this study primarily because I'm not sure exactly what you're trying to accomplish or what, with this study. I'm not sure what is, what is going to yield here. I think Councilmember Rouse, you're exactly right, it's dangerous on some of our streets. This is not a very safe city. You can talk about the data, we have a lot of bike riders, and maybe statistically it's going down, but I remember staff report and all the red circles up there of all the collisions between bikes and cars. And what we also didn't hear about in detail was what kinds of accidents are happening in our city. I've seen a few, and they're pretty gruesome, even on bike paths. I question, how exactly do you make it safe? If you're going to spend some money, focus on the safety issue. How do you save someone when they're going up Mission Canyon and there's a car there? It's, it's, cars and bikes don't mix very well together when there are collisions. So I ask you to look at how do you make it safe? That's an important thing. I certainly wouldn't put any of my kids on a bike to go to school. And I remember a speaker, last time we discussed it, she said she loves biking, but she'd never put her kids on a bicycle to go to school. So I think we have to face some realities. Are we trying to get more people to bike to work? Is this going to really statistically change the traffic on the roads? I'm guessing not. At CityWatch, we prefer that you focus on buses. Buses take people to and fro safely, and people use them in greater numbers, buses. Therefore, we need to focus on roads, which you, as a council, are rightly focusing on when you talk about infrastructure. It's not that I don't love bikes, it's just that they have to be safe, and they have to be used, and using them as an antidote somehow or another to alleviate traffic, I think that's a pipe dream, it's just not statistically real. Thanks.
Okay, that concludes the public comment. It's back to the council. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dayton, another question. So this 50-intersection study that you're talking about, how exactly does that work? Is that a one-day study or what?
Councilmember Francisco, yes, it's a, it's a, we do it in one week. Not every intersection is on the same day, but they're, they're Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
And is that measuring just the commuter time?
That's correct. It's, it's the two-hour period from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and in the evening, it's approximately 5:30 to 7:00.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I want to point out to Mr. Woodrow that safety is what we're talking about, and to know where we start, we need to know who's actually, or what the numbers are on the street, and how best to regulate that or make things life easier for them. I appreciate Ed France's comment that a baseline is important. I think it is important. We, it probably won't be perfect, but at least it will be something that, from which we can measure, as you said before. And that, that would really help bring, I think, encourage people to ride bikes in the future. So even though it does suggest some extra money, what price are we putting on safety for bike riders? I don't think we should put a price on that. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In my conversations with Mr. France and Mr. Frank, when we talked about the impressions of the, in the old days, and biking, and the Bike Coalition, and how it was kind of a religion, and bike people are good, and car people are bad, and I think they've, I think we've all evolved from that to where we're trying to facilitate the desire and the convenience of people to choose to ride bikes, and that we're trying to, I think, when I look at a data-driven model, sometimes statistics can be whatever they want to be, whatever the, whoever commissions the statistics want them to be. And we certainly saw that, I've been, staff knows how critical I was of the Nelson Nygaard work when it came to the plans, the general plan update. You know, to me, it was a complete waste of time and money. I think there's a common sense approach. I think there's a way to visit this bicycle master plan that, where we choose, and I think Mr. Hotchkiss made this point in an earlier presentation, ways to delineate which are the best and safest bike routes, and ways to make them distinct so that you know where cars are supposed to be and where bikes are supposed to be, where you can expect to see more bicycle traffic, and where cars can expect to see, you know, delineated lanes, whether it be Class A lanes down Modoc or Los Pecitas, or whether it be the lanes like we have on Haley Street, where we could use the width of the, of the road to create a safe passage. So there, I mean, I still can't, I'm still not getting over the Mission thing, I think that's, that's nuts, but it is going to take a fair amount of research to find out what it is. I think Mr. Dayton has hit on something that might be possible to do without going to it at the strangest expense. So I do think that it's valuable to use data to some level, but I think to get the kind of data that we're talking about that would really be, really be something useful, be, I think 20,000 is not even going to scratch the surface of what you really would need to do. And to me, the bicycle master plan is not about increasing the number of people that ride bikes. It's about the people who choose to ride bikes having safe means to do it, and encouraging companies like Sonos, who through their own initiative are creating this amazing bike plan for employees and bike share plan. That wasn't a government idea, they did that. And I think that, trying to, you know, even officially encourage it, but trying to facilitate it by making routes, making commuter lots, the bike station we're about ready to open on Lot 3, those kind of things make more sense, I think, even than trying to create a statistic this, and trying to create a, the new religion about biking. I don't buy it, I think that it's, it's great, but my kids didn't ride their bike to school because the world is a scarier place than it was when we were kids. That's why they didn't ride to school, it wasn't because the biking was so dangerous. I rode all over East LA when I was a kid, we wouldn't have thought about that today. So I think we have a common sense approach, we can look at those routes, we can find out, not even so much statistically, you can look at that and say, okay, State Street makes sense, you know, maybe Mitchell Trainor makes more sense than Mission for those people trying to get from the west side into town. I mean, I think there's ways to approach that may not be model or data-driven. So I'm, the next study is not something I'm really excited about sponsoring, to be honest with you.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I think that this new idea that's come out, as we're talking about today, makes sense because I think it helps put everything in context. You know, we're doing the enhanced count at the 50 intersections. I'd like to make sure that we include pedestrian counts when we do that, because it just seems like we're going to have the cameras out there, might as well take advantage of that technology and capture all that information. We may have any use for that in the future. I think this information may be most applicable to the state's active transportation grant program, to have a definitive number that we can use to share with the state to increase our odds of getting funding is probably the most valuable part of this, because I kind of agree with Councilmember Rouse. I don't know that ultimately this is going to change anything in terms of the bicycle master plan. I think that that has its own reasons for existing and different reason, a different reason for being important. I am curious, this keeps coming up every time we talk about this subject, that some members of council talk about, there are some streets that should be encouraged for bicyclists and other streets that maybe shouldn't, and don't exactly understand what that really means in real life, since the vehicle code allows bicyclists to go wherever they are, they want to go, and that's appropriate. And I think that the evidence that people are using Mission Street is exactly to that point, is the reason they're using Mission Street is because they have to get from point A to point B, and that's the way to go. And people use individual judgment about safety and folks, and speed and time and where they have to go. And that's why people are on these streets, because that's the street to get from A to B. So we're not going to change that, we can make it safer, but, and that's, I think, part of the point of the bicycle master plan is to figure out what that is, and how that, much that costs, and what is involved in that, and that isn't necessarily going to be changed by a count of traffic. But I do think, you know, spending a modest amount of money to add that information to the city's planning process is a good idea.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you. So I have a finance question for Mr. Casey. So this 20,000, where would it come from? Which fund?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, it sounds like you might be heading towards a smaller number than 20,000, but your question is still appropriate.
Yes, I heard that, yeah.
It either needs to come from general fund reserves or from the streets fund reserves. It's not budgeted in our budget currently, so getting some guidance about whether general fund or streets fund would be helpful.
Thank you. Well, I do have other budget priorities than spending 20,000. The 2,500, is that the figure you're standing by, Mr. Dayton, as a way to equip the technology to count bikes?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, no, I'm not standing, I've got to get an estimate from the, the traffic engineer that we hire, and it'll be the lowest one. But what I'm hearing is it's about 10% of the total number for the count. So I'm estimating that somewhere between 2,500 and 7,000. I think people latched on to the smaller number.
And I just want to follow up on that. If you, this is a request from two council members, so we haven't done a lot of staff work to kind of be responsive to these questions. So if you want us to go back and get a more accurate number, we could do that, or you can give us direction within a ballpark, but we don't come prepared when two council members place an item until we know there's a majority council interest to pursue something.
Understood. Well, to me, and kind of Mr. Woodrow triggered this knowledge for me, is you don't allow your kids to ride bikes because you don't think the roads are safe. So if we dedicated some bike lanes and there was a sense of more safety, then more people would be riding their bikes and allowing their kids to ride their bikes. So in a way, counts matter, but maybe that's why you said that, Mr. Dayton, that, yeah, we look at the counts, and then sometimes if, if a majority here, if there's a culture at the city of Santa Barbara that we want to improve biking all over the city, we want people to be on their bikes for all the benefits that I won't name now, then we just make it happen. So that, I mean, that's where I'm at. And I would be interested in you all going and coming back with a number, because the Strava piece, together with this other new idea that came up today, just might give us the information that we need. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, just, I think that this, this conversation has slalomed its way to a pretty good place. That we, the, Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. Francisco suggested a prescription of, of one kind, which has then gotten staff, stimulated some staff conversation, that we have a more economical way to do that. Everybody likes to have some data to, some good data to work with. I respectfully, well, I'll add my piece in on the, on the overall concept. I do think that as safety is perceived to be stronger, that there, it's, it's likely to stimulate more bicycle riding. So that would be an area where I just would imagine that to be the case. But I also appreciate that we've got a very, obviously a much smaller number than the 20,000 is, is being suggested as a way to get some better data. I suggest that we consider going that way, and at least then checking in and saying, how did that, how is that working? Is that satisfying some of the concerns? And obviously, you can always come back and take another bite at the apple if necessary, but this would be one, sounds like a nice three for the price of maybe not of one, but at least dovetailing on other traffic counting activities to get a full package.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dayton, if we did that count you were talking about, the 50 intersection, or whatever it is, count, would we have that in time to be helpful with the bicycle master plan?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, any, just one point in time count is not going to be helpful to guide us in the, in the master plan process. We really need two points at a minimum.
Well, you said this is over like three days of a week, right?
It would be one count, so one of those days, the 50 intersections are counted either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. So it would be, it'll be one, it'll be one day for, for those counts that are, that are counted.
And you don't think that would be helpful?
Well, it'll show us, it'll show us the volume at those intersections, but you know, these are our most congested intersections in the city, and sometimes people, you know, go away from them. But one, one volume in one, at one point in time doesn't really tell us a lot of information. We might have some surprises like we saw in the Strava data. But what, when we come back to you in, in July with the bicycle master plan process that you set us on, we'll have a wealth of information on the question that you asked us, which is what, what are Santa Barbarans saying about the future of bicycling? And it's, it's interesting, because like, for instance, if you see up there, State Street is the most traveled street on the Strava map, and that's also the one that people are saying, hey, you know, we, we want to have a better facility on State Street, for an example. So we're going to have a lot of, a lot of good requests or feeling of what the community's saying, which is much more valuable than what you asked us to do, rather than just a one, one point in time bike count. But over time, if we take that count over and over again, and we can see a trend line, we can see, are people changing their habits? Are we, are we getting more volumes to those intersections or less?
How would we do that over and over again?
Well, for instance, we're, we're going to, we're going to be counting probably something on the order of seven times within the life of the general plan, we'll be counting the traffic volumes.
That's over 20 years, though, right?
It is. And so we would, if we did, every single time we did the bike count, we'd have seven point, data points to show if there's any trends, or what the trend was.
That's a little long distance, but if we did that once every year, once every two years, is that possible to do that? Get a real good bike count for, and show what our trends are?
If you count, if you do the bike counts without paying for the cars, the price goes up pretty steep, you know, probably on the order of more like 25, 30.
Okay, well, that's kind of why we got this number here today, so, all right. Well, I certainly think that that's useful information, in one way or another, we need it.
So I guess I'm still not clear about what it is that we're being asked to do, or what the outcome of what we're trying to get, and how that relates to the bicycle master plan. I'm fine if a majority of council wants to bring something back for us to assess, and I imagine if we're going to get into a contract, we'd have to approve that anyway. So I, I just, just some thoughts from today. I mean, Strava kind of freaks me out a little bit, little TMI, I don't know. I can see, if I'm thinking, right, if you look in the funk zone area, that must be where that little rectangle is, must be where the Sonos building is, I imagine, you know, right there at Helena Street and Mason, that kind of, so I guess a lot of Sonos people want, are Stravarians, or is that what you call them? I don't know. So it's good info, but I, actually, I think Kathy Maria had a, Ms. Mario had a point in that these are probably, and Ed France had a point, the people who are actually going to download the app and follow this are avid bike riders, they're not your typical bike rider. And if we're looking at bicycle master plan and safety issues, the point is, I think, to expand the availability of options of bicycling to the typical bike rider. So if we're only going to measure what the avid bike rider does, I don't know if that's really the right demographic. And so that's where I guess then it's getting into the count of these intersections, okay? That kind of makes more sense of more global audience. And I also look at, for example, just a couple weeks ago, we, you know, there was the Bicycle Corridor Boulevard, Bicycle Boulevard on Aliso Street, and just to try that out, and when I was speaking to staff, I'm saying, you know, Chino Street would be a great suggestion on the west side, because it's one off from the main street of San Andres. And when I drive on San Andres and there's a bicycle there, I mean, it's crowded, and I get, I know it's a charo and all that good stuff, but you know, it's, you're supposed to be three feet away from the bicyclists now, and there's a bus coming the other direction. It's a lot of going on in that street. And so I, you know, and so I kind of look at the bright line there, saying, oof, no wonder, it feels cramped. But yet, if Chino Street was a Bicycle Boulevard, maybe we can shift that activity to Chino Street and away from San Andres Street, which is, I think, is what Mr. Hotchkiss was talking about in terms of finding ways that there's places where you can dedicate safer routes for bicyclists that can still get from people from point A to point B. So those are all the things swimming in my head. I'm still not quite sure what it is we're supposed to do today, except maybe get some more information, and I'm happy, more, information's good, data's good, as long as it's really, the information we get is, has some outcomes that we can use to create policy, I guess that's my ultimate question. So I suppose if we want to bring something back and assess it at that point, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm still not quite sure exactly what it is. I'm still not quite sure exactly what it is that we're assessing and for what purpose. So, Ms. Mario, and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
Okay, so one thing that we didn't fully discuss today, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, how, would you need more funding to do what you said, your Strava rollout? What was the expression you used? Get on Strava? Or what was it?
Drotivise, I don't know.
Rollout?
Number, Mario, get your Strava on, it's just a...
Get your Strava on. Okay, so would that require a little bit of money that you, can we talk about that?
It could. You know, what we would do anyway with no money, right, we already spent $4,000 on the Strava data.
Okay.
We think it's really good. We're already seeing things we didn't know. And we'll be able to see exactly how many people are commuting who are using Strava every day, and what are the routes they're choosing. That'll be very helpful to us. What we'll probably do is, we'll probably tell the Bicycle Coalition, hey, could you get the APB out and tell everybody to do that? So that, you know, that we can do, and I think that they'll probably be willing to do that. With, with, with some amount of money, or we could probably do some advertising too, to invite a greater population to do that. And then, you know, we can do that in a more sophisticated way to help people, you know, get over the app fright, or, you know, people who are unfamiliar with that, you know, then you're talking about more money. So if we do nothing, spend nothing, I think the Strava data is very useful, and will probably grow the number of people who are using it for commutes.
You know, I suggest that's the way we go. Everyone has a phone, and I think with a little bit of advertising, we would get some data. And we're already in the process of the Bicycle Master Plan, and I really appreciate the conversation today, but I would suggest we table the idea of the, you know, spending $20,000, or even the, because what you told Mr. Hotchkiss a minute ago is that even if you did that 50 intersection counting, it wouldn't really give you enough for what we needed for the Bicycle Master Plan process. Is that what I heard? So I think we've had a good discussion, and we should just let staff roll out Strava for us.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a couple of people pointed out, obviously, Strava is tracking the enthusiast cyclists. And when I first looked at that map, and I saw how bright Sycamore Canyon Road and Gibraltar Road were, that was pretty clear. I still think it's a useful tool, and I think the idea of the Bicycle Coalition, if they want to publicize it and get more people using it, I think that's great. But I, I cannot understand not wanting to know what bicycle traffic is. We've done all of our traffic planning in this town based on counting automobiles, because they, after all, are the main users of roads, and that's what everything depends on. So I cannot imagine why people would not want to know bicycle traffic data. If we could get it for free, of course we would want it. It will cost us a little bit of money. And this is the first I've heard of the 50 intersection count. This happens, what, every few years?
It depends on our growth. We haven't grown a lot since 2008 because of the recession. But the cost of recounting is born in how much money we get in the land development process, so it happens automatically if we have more growth. So it could be three years, it could be two years, maybe five, depends on growth.
Okay. So it seems to me, if this is something that we're doing, if we're doing the intersection count anyway to get traffic data, we should be including bicycles in that count if we can. We should be including, as Mr. Hart suggested, pedestrians in that count if we can. And I agree with Mr. Dayton, one year of data will not give us much information. But if we're collecting that data all the time, as we should be, over time, it will give us valuable information, even if it doesn't change how we implement the Bicycle Master Plan this time. So since, and this is the first I've heard of this idea, but it sounds much more economical than $20,000. And you can come back at a future meeting, say in July, and give us an exact quote of how much it would cost to add bicycles and pedestrians to this.
Okay, let's see if we can get some motion here. Mr. Hotchkiss, I guess?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out one thing, you know, when we look at technology, like the Strava thing, it's like miraculous, but it requires to be, it has to be turned on. So if you're regularly commuting downtown, I got a feeling about the third day, you ain't going to be turning on your Strava necessarily. And for the enthusiast, of course, they're always going to do it, because they want to see if they're going faster, however they're doing. But for somebody like me, if I was commuting to downtown, I don't think I'd be turning on my Strava.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move that we direct staff to come back to us in July with a quote for what it would cost to add the bicycle count and pedestrian count to this 50 intersection study.
Hey, Mr. Ross?
Just a quick question, Mr. Hotchkiss. When you got the engineer quote, what was the scope of the study?
I'm sorry, don't have it. It was just a broad brush thing.
Because I was just wondering if that was, because I just remember what we...
No, I think it's going, I think it's going to be less, but we asked the item out...
If it was going to be a one-day count, if it was going to be, you know...
No, it'll be over a week, so you'd get a broad, and primarily commuting.
Just trying to get some perspective on it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Would it just be okay with the council if we came back in sync with our traffic counts? And that, that contract would be more like September, early September.
Make of the motion?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, make it in second, or, yep. Okay, so do we know what the motion is? All right.
And Madam Mayor, was there any preference, general fund versus streets fund?
I think we can bring that back at that point.
Bring that back at the time, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Just some agenda logistics. Anyone in the room who is here for an interview that's supposed to be started at four? Okay, so what I'm, and a couple of people, so instead of waiting until four, why don't we do these two interviews? Then we're going to adjourn to, well, recess to, well, move to closed session, and then finish the other items, the other interviews at four. That way, they don't have to wait another 45 minutes. So if you could read, actually, item, what item is it? Item 15.
Interviews for city advisory groups.
Thank you. So, so for the, those that are here, just come on up, state your name, which advisory committee you're applying for, and then, and why you're interested, and if you're applying to serve a second term, then maybe a little bit about your experience currently, and then, and thank you for applying. So Missy, come on up.
Honorable Mayor and honorable council members, hello. I'm Missy Zaitsov again, and I am currently the Chair of the Dingle Ireland Sister City. That's my fun Irish side. And you all know how successful, with all of your help, the Dingle delegation was in March. But I also have a very serious side to me, and I have applied for two different advisory committees. One is the Neighborhood Advisory Council, and the other is the Fire and Police Commission. The Fire and Police Commission does reflect my past experience, and I hope to be involved in it as my primary choice. As a former Malibu council member, I was responsible for creating advisory groups and the General Plan Task Force as I was on the first council. I was also on the Public Safety Council Committee, and was liaison for the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I was also on the Council Contracts Committee, actually negotiating the first LA County Sheriff's Department contract with the city of Malibu. I have attended both the Neighborhood Advisory Council meeting and the Fire and Police Commission meetings. Fire and police, actually, when I did attend, presented a preview of the fire budget and the police budget for '15, '16. I have been a juvenile institutions officer at Santa Barbara Juvenile Hall. I've worked graveyard for Noah's Anchorage. Both positions required working with the Santa Barbara Police Department and the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department. I also worked as an airport police assistant in 2003 and 2004. I've been trained at Pepperdine Law School in mediation and negotiation. I'm currently a substitute or guest teacher for Santa Barbara and for carpentery. I have public safety employees in my family. My son is currently an engineer with a local fire department, and my brother is Chief of Detectives for LA County Sheriff's Department. I would be honored to serve on the Fire and Police Commission or the Neighborhood Advisory Council. Thank you for your consideration and for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? And thank you for your service with Dingle. That was a great visit when they came here. Yep, thank you for your leadership on that. Mr. France? Just tell us which committee first, just so we can get it down.
I'm applying for Downtown Parking Committee.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council, my name is Ed France. In my own time, I have served for the last, I think, six years, maybe even seven, two terms on the Transportation and Circulation Committee. We've had one overlap meeting with the Downtown Parking Committee, and those two both effectively help advise, not just council, but also Public Works Transportation. I have sat as a board member for the last five years of the Santa Barbara Century. I've served as a president of the Santa Barbara Century. I have a Bachelor of Arts from UCSB in Environmental Studies, class of '05. I have an interest in transportation policy. If you can't tell on my geeking out on bike stuff, that's beyond simply bike stuff. I have an interest in how busing works, how it's paid for, when it works well, when it doesn't work well. Same for biking. I have an interest in downtown parking being accessible and being a, a perfect representation to the visitors, the caliber of our city. My first visit to Santa Barbara, the first stopoff point, was the Downtown Parking Lot on Coda and Anacapa. I was a high school student on the way to Stanford, and we're for an invitational for running, and we got to have an hour at lunch in downtown Santa Barbara. We parked the van, spent an hour running up and down, having a ton of fun on State Street, and we got back in and headed out, and it worked. And clearly, I made it back. The downtown parking system is great, and it can continue to improve for residents and for visitors, and it also interacts with busing and bicycling areas that I have a level of expertise in, that I feel I can positively contribute to the conversation. For example, a fun fact, as our friend from City Watch pointed out, you know, more people take the bus for work. It's actually not true. In the Santa Barbara County and city, more people bike to work than take the bus for work. But the structure of how we subsidize busing is slightly archaic. Little, like, geek-out kind of concepts are things that, when we're talking about how to maintain great parking system and how it interacts with other systems, I feel I can positively contribute to the conversation. So I would like to ask for your support to sit on and serve Downtown Parking Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. And I don't think there's anyone else here for an interview, so we will hold off on the rest of the interviews until four o'clock, but if you could read the closed sessions, we'll do that in the meantime.
Item 16, conference with city attorney regarding anticipated litigation, and item 17, city attorney compensation negotiations.
Great, we'll be back at four. There was nothing to report out, that we should report out from the closed session, and so we're going to move back to item 15, which is, which are the interviews for the city advisory groups. We started it just beforehand, and so now we're bringing it back. And just want to, first off, thank everyone who's applying for a position on a board and commission, and thank you for being here today. This is our last opportunity, I believe, for, yeah, we, this is it, right? And we're going to appoint in a couple of weeks, so we've had a couple of other interview items on past agendas. So thank you very much for your service. If you've served before and are asking to continue to, and what I'm going to do is call up each advisor, each committee by name, and if it's a committee you have applied for, just come on up to the podium, state your name, and why you're interested in serving, and if you've been on this committee before and you're asking for a reappointment, maybe a little bit about your experience on the Boarder Commission. And then for those of you on the youth council applicants, if you could say your name and which school you're from, because there's a very long list, it'll help us find you on our list here, so that, just to keep that in mind. And if you've applied for more than one committee, you can obviously speak to both of them when you come up to the podium. You don't have to do it twice, right? So, okay, with that, we will start with the Access Advisory Committee. Mr. Burnham, come on up.
Mayor Schneider, members of the, members of the Senate of our city council. Did any of you wash your cars in the last couple of days? Oh, what a, what a gift, the rain. Wow, and what a surprise. My name is Bob Burnham. I have been honored, I am honored to have served on the Access Advisory Committee since 2011. I am currently serving in my second tour of duty as committee chairman. Feel very trusted by my committee members to lead us in furthering the good work that staff has already begun in improving accessibility across the city for people with all different disabilities. I've been totally blind since birth through a rare type of glaucoma, but I've learned over the years through my work at Santa Barbara MTD and working with other groups of disabled persons, to appreciate not only the challenges of different disabilities, but also the, the needs brought by each one, to give, to give us a bigger picture, a broader perspective of what we need to do as a city to improve accessibility. So I am willing and able to devote my time and energy to serve on this committee, to ensure and increase accessibility in city facilities and public rights of way. And staff has done so much good work in all their reports to us on sidewalk infill, the constant challenge of curb, curb cuts, the loop system for people hard of hearing that is now in place in several city facilities. I, I plan to work in coordination with staff in the advisory capacity that we have regarding all the projects presented to us. Like I said, I do have experience working in consultation and use of assistive services and technology, and also experience representing and resolving accessibility issues for people with a broad range of disabilities. I enjoy drawing people out by asking the right questions and validating points of, points of view that are made regardless of their differences. And I feel committed very strongly to continue assisting, and so much good work, like I said, that's already begun. We still have much work ahead of us. My personal goal as committee chairman and as a member of this committee is to communicate better with staff between meetings, to bring, bring to them and follow through with the public comment, so much good public comment that's brought before us, and to continue that follow-through in items to be placed on agendas at future meetings. So thank you for having appointed me already to serve, and I pledge to you continued work if you reappoint me to serve my next term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Okay, Community Development and Human Services, anyone for that committee? Okay. I'm sorry? Oh, come on up. I didn't see you come up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Charlotte Alexandria Golatmore, and I applied for the Community Development and Human Services Committee for the disabled, disabled community, the African-American community. And I also applied for the medical, I'm sorry, Measure P Committee Medical Professional. Do you want me to just speak for all of them? Okay. I believe that my role will be to work collaboratively with others within the advisory committee to assist and advise the city council and our staff... to assist and advise the city council and our staff as a volunteer of a citizen advisory board I know and understand is an integral part of the American local government. I believe that advisory boards are a way for local governments to engage citizens in the democratic process. Their primary purpose is to provide judicious advice for the citizens' perspectives. Activities of an advisory board member may include the study of critical issues and taking public testimony, performing independent research, and reviewing staff reports and recommendations, thus preparing the advisory body to discuss, analyze, and formulate, and forward well-developed thoughtful recommendations to the legislative body. I believe that I possess a great sense and capability to work with members as a collective group with a fair, impartial, and respectful way for the public, for my staff, and for those who are on the advisory board as well. I am already an active civic engagement person, daily involved with various nonprofit organizations, providing a positive impact internationally and nationally. I also volunteer here in Santa Barbara, at the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinic, as a nurse practitioner, and I'm there every Friday, and I have been there for over a year, seeing patients from eight to five, and I love it there. And I just, I'm looking at this position as another way for me to be utilized, to assist my community here in Santa Barbara, and to provide an avenue for those who has a voice but don't know how to bring it forth, but just to help navigate that and to just be one of those advocates for them or just speak for them.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Downtown Parking. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of council. I'll certainly be brief. Just over six years ago, I came to Santa Barbara.
Tell us your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Jim Scafidi. Just over six years ago, I came to the city, and I met with many of you who were on council at the time, some of you weren't, and I offered to do what I could for the city. It was sort of an out-of-the-blue discussion that caught many of you off guard, because it's rare that people come and say, hey, what can I do, rather than, hey, this is what I want. And what I was told is I should apply to work on committees and commissions for the city. Except for wanting to serve the city of Santa Barbara, I have no agenda or axe to grind. My interest in serving on the Downtown Parking Committee is simply that I want to be part of something that successfully implements its mission. The downtown parking facilities are a great asset to the city of Santa Barbara, and they play an important role in the economic viability of the central business district, as well as the overall economic strength of the city. Of course, these facilities do not stand alone, but must be part of an integrated transportation and economic plan for the city. As such, I believe a good committee member would be someone with the ability to work cooperatively with a parking organization, as well as with outside constituents, both within the city government and members of the public, including business owners and consumers and users of the facilities. As a division chief for the Attorney General of Massachusetts, I was a liaison between the Attorney General and the members of the business community throughout Massachusetts. As a mayor, I worked with various constituents groups to achieve consensus on a number of very difficult issues. For these reasons, I believe I have the skills and experience that would make me an effective member of the committee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Hachakis?
Where were you mayor?
I was mayor of the city of East Liverpool, Ohio.
East Liverpool, I don't think.
Actually, if you look it up, there's an interesting article about it in today's Daily Cos about the incinerator that's there, so.
Is that?
Which was the difficult issue that I had to negotiate through as I was mayor.
Interesting. It all comes back.
It all comes back, doesn't it? Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Hi, my name is Ethan Shankman. This will be my third effort to get on the Downtown Parking Committee in a row. There was no position that was filled. It has been less vacant. I was the only one to apply last time, and it still remains vacant. And I guess here, what my role here is to be persistent and to explore how it is that the city can remain compliant, or actually get compliant, to the unlawful collection practices against elderly and disabled folks. You know, it seems to have been a bit minimized, and we've brought it up to the Downtown Parking Committee, as well as the subcommittee panels. And I don't know what the education is here on the council, but there's a reason why we don't charge handicap people. It's like taxing the tax. And your baseline principle, your grassroots summary of an economic model went so far with the figurehead family across the Atlantic, and yet here, by making it the standard around the handicap and the elderly, get us to the moon. And for some reason, somebody thinks that they can tax the tax and play Solomon. And under Public Works, under the Downtown Parking Committee, and I have tried numerously and have given some thoughtful approach, the appraisal to my last interview by a couple of kids, members of the constituency, thought I did quite well in the last interview, and why it would have to be so difficult then to meet the conformance and guidelines. What the Downtown Parking Committee is doing currently is it's taking capital reserves and depleting them, while also reporting excessive surpluses. And the money that they're reporting in surplus includes money that's not only collected from the handicap and the elderly, but also their own employee for park and ride programs. And so that the statistics are completely and utterly artificial. This is not a $350 million enterprise fund, or if it is, when. $7 million brought in for revenues per year, that's $7 million total revenue. And the outlay is $5 million. And it seems that, based on our observances, kids have been navigating traffic needlessly for the hours or for the statistics needed to generate these revenues for, you know, to navigate traffic in the parking garage, which is, you know, really unsafe. I mean, have you tried to take a breath over there at the Granada? And there are kids, and they just need to make some money, and they need a part-time job, and yet they're under these ubiquitous, toxic environments, and for what? To meet an economic ambition is presumed. I haven't been able to get answers. I know that, as a member of the public, we are limited as to the level of customer service or response time from staff to reply as to, like, for example, how much money is being collected specifically from handicap people. Mr. Higgins on the Planning Commission had pointed out that he wanted to see the duration, the statistics, how long a handicap person might be charged for, and they haven't supplied that information. So whether it be council, whether it be the public, whether it be other committee members, it doesn't seem that we're getting the response appropriately, at least from the public's perspective, and that is another reason why a more proactive measure on my participation on the board could quality assure getting these issues resolved. And before I finish, I know that, you know, it is a small town, and I'd like to invite people to see my background, because we all have different backgrounds. You're welcome to visit churchofcalifornia.us, world wide web dot churchofcalifornia.us, and also welcome to check out powerhousemedia.net and link to the Better Time segment. And that has been, just a nutshell, as to what my background is and my philosophy, belief systems, or what have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Fire and Police Commission? Fire and Police Pension Commission? Living Wage Advisory Committee? Come on up.
Hello, City Council.
Bring that mic down if you want. There you go.
Yes. Hello, City Council. My name is Greg Freeland, and I am a local resident. I've been living in Santa Barbara since about mid-1960s, off and on, and I've never been involved in commissions before, but I think at this point in my life, I'm ready to get a little bit more involved. And I've looked over the Living Wage Advisory Committee, and it seems to be very diverse, and everything seems to be going along smoothly. So I don't really see any contentious interest that's going to be involved in this, and since I'm the type of person to sort of get along and look for compromises and coalitions and so on. As far as the Living Wage goes, I've been involved outside of this, since the beginning of the 21st century here, and I was always impressed that Santa Barbara actually did this from the very beginning. And since I'm a professor, I use Santa Barbara oftentimes as a role model for my students when talking about local politics. It's a great example of how community members can be involved and actually have some type of say in what goes on here. And also, I looked at the progress that's been made since this has been a ordinance, and it's been very good. I believe there's going to be actually a raise in July, if I'm not mistaken, up to 1639, if my research has been very good there. And I feel that not only is this a great commission to be involved in, but my background, growing up in Durham, North Carolina, very working-class community, and always been concerned about wages that people get, and I see that even in Durham, North Carolina now, that the city council is looking at this. So I also feel that it puts me in a position where I feel that I'm a current person, that is, I'm with a city that cares about this community, and really, I have no other reason for getting involved in this. I have read quite a bit about the, you know, the makeup of the commission, and I read a lot about the Living Wage all over the United States. And I feel that coming on as an advisor is a good way to get involved here, as opposed to being an advocate. I'm not so much of an advocate as a person who wants to advise a city on something they're already doing very well. So that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for the Living Wage Advisory Committee? Come on up.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Your Mr. Casada?
Yes, uh-huh.
You know, I think he qualifies for the category of a manager working at one of the companies that's a vendor under the ordinance.
Yes.
And the way we have it, you aren't listed under that category, but Madam Clerk, I did just want to point that out.
Okay. So it just helps when we look to see what slots are available under which categories, however many ones you may fit in, so.
Well, I appreciate.
Which company was that?
ExTech Systems. Mario Casada from ExTech Systems, vendor here in the community. I've been here in this community since 1985, living in Santa Barbara since 1988, and currently working for ExTech Systems, one of the vendors, vendor of choice for the community, which services San Barbara School District, Goliath University School District, Cottage, Samsung, UCSB over the years. So I've been with them 30 years, and it's been around six years now that I've been getting involved in the community. Belong to, I'm a board of directors and used to be the president of Father Sonidos, United Parents of Santa Barbara, which advocates for parents here in the community, and I like getting involved in the community. And I was asked by the owner of ExTech Systems if I'd be interested, and I said, sure, I would love to. I like advocating, I like getting involved in our community, I've been successful at it. And it's interesting, I'm also part of Language Justice Network, which is hosted by just communities. We provide a variety of interpreter and translator services for Santa Maria, Santa Barbara, Ventura County. But it's a matter of getting involved, and I've been given an opportunity through this, I guess, asking me to get involved, and it's interesting to do that. I like business, I continue to, will be in business for quite a while in our organization, and get intricately involved with decision-makers in the higher organizations that we work with. And interested, just interested to help advocate for people who have a need and know more about this, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you for making that clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're off now to, moving right along, I'm going to do that one last. We're going to go to the Sister Cities Board. Anyone for Sister Cities? Transportation and Circulation. Okay, Water Commission. Mr. Jordan, I see you in the back there.
I just realized it was before Y. I was looking forward to watching everybody scream up here in a tie and a coat.
You can stay.
It doesn't get any better, I can tell you. Madam Mayor, council members, Mike Jordan. Any of the other applicants coming on a day like this? Just saying, okay? So I still have a great interest in water. I have actually talked to several of you a couple of times on this subject, so I'll just get the elephant out of the way. I have the time, the day of the month works really well for me. I have an employer who's very supportive. I think there's some nexus between Planning Commission and water that obviously is there and will continue to be there. And I think you have a group of great applicants, more than enough group of great applicants. There's probably a case to be made to make an adjustment and get more people on there while there's the interest. That would be a wonderful thing. So I think my input to you would be to make sure that you get a broad representation and a cross-section of this community, not loading up on one particular set of talents or skill sets, but that you make sure that we have every segment of the community represented on this commission. To that, I would just offer a couple nuances. I think I'm very comfortable gathering information, engaging in a credible manner with members of the community, and conveying that in a manner to staff that supports where staff wants to go, asks the right questions, and moves to a resolution. Whatever that resolution is, I think I'm also good at getting that information and that message back to members of the community in a manner that's credible and supportive of where the city wants to go. The other nuance I think I would bring is that I think eventually we're going to get to a point where there's going to be some social equity issues with our water. It's just going to get so much more expensive, become so much hard to get, regardless of whether this is a 10-year cyclic thing or a forever thing. Who wants to live through the last four years again? We're going to need better answers. You can travel up north in the state a little bit and see actual environmental justice issues where little towns don't have water, their water's been poisoned. I think it's going to be a different question down here. We're going to price ourselves into a situation where those on fixed income, those with big families, are going to have trouble affording our answers to the water, and I think that voice also needs to be present on this group. Little resume, just to remind you, I don't think I do, but a couple of terms on the Creeks Advisory Committee. I'm now in my second term, year and a half into my second term on the Planning Commission, and I just ended four years as a governor appointee to the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'm interested in water, coming into town and leaving town. I'd love to participate. Again, I have the time, and I know you have a whole handful of great applicants, and I know it's going to be tough, but I'm willing and able to do it if decided upon. Any questions?
Any questions? No? Thank you. Thank you. Water Commission, come on up.
Certainly sets the bar pretty high. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is John Ummel, and of course, I'm interested in this position on the Water Commission. A little background, I was raised in Santa Barbara, attended Bishop High School, Santa Barbara City College, recently retired and moved back to Santa Barbara from the San Francisco Bay Area after a 40-year hiatus. I'm 62 years old, married, have three grown children, and live in San Rokee. As a retiree, I have more than enough time to devote to this pursuit. Furthermore, one of the items on my bucket list was to volunteer in some sort of public capacity, and this certainly fills the bill. The fact that we're in a severe drought makes it all the more interesting. Professionally, I have worked nearly 35 years in the public sector at the county, city, and special district level. 20 of those years have been in the water sector. My most recent position, a position I held for nearly 18 years, was at with the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. Bosca, as it is known, is a special district in San Mateo, and oversees the water supply and conservation needs of its 26-member agencies, which include, for example, Palo Alto, San Jose, Hayward, and Mountain View, as well as private entities such as Stanford and publicly traded California Water Service. All 26 members have one thing in common: they receive... All 26 members have one thing in common: They receive all or a portion of their water from San Francisco's hetch-etchy system. Though my working title was Senior Analyst, my functional role was primarily that of an auditor. My job was to ensure that the wholesale cost of water charged to member agencies was both fair and reasonable. In order to do my job, I had to become intimately familiar with San Francisco's water supply, distribution, and treatment facilities in order to assess whether the costs to improve and maintain those facilities were shared costs with residents of San Francisco or costs to be borne solely by the 26 suburban members. In my 18 years with BOSCA, I recovered nearly $20 million in erroneous charges on behalf of our 26 suburban customers. In addition to my analyst duties with BOSCA, I also served four years on San Francisco's Revenue Bond Oversight Committee, which was charged with overseeing billions, that's with a B, in bond expenditures approved by San Francisco voters for water and sewer upgrades. I was vice chair of this oversight committee, as well as chair of its only subcommittee. As subcommittee chair, I was responsible for working with consultants and auditors that assisted our oversight function. In addition, I created the monthly agenda, arranged for proper noticing, wrote all the agenda memos, held public meetings, and took testimony from the public. Needless to say, I'm very familiar with the public meeting process, having served as staff in one role and appointed public servant in the other. One of the questions that was on the form that I filled out was to mention issues that I thought might be relevant in a water situation. I took a great deal of time thinking about that, and I have three. I have to say that I am impressed with the job that staff has done thus far and the direction the council has taken. Three areas of interest that I have are a little different, but I'm sure the ones you may have heard of, maybe not. The first is indirect potable reuse, more commonly known by detractors as toilet-to-tap. Why can't the city treat its wastewater to a higher standard? Use it in its injection wells to serve as a barrier against seawater intrusion, or simply use it to recharge the local groundwater basin, which can then be re-treated and put into the distribution system. It's cheaper than D cell, although I'm a proponent of D cell. Orange County and San Jose are currently doing this. I understand San Francisco is interested. Second, I'm a proponent of behavioral demand management, whereby customers are motivated to save water when they're able to compare their use with their neighbors. This software app can be integrated with your current billing system. East Bay Municipal Utility District, a large northern Californian water utility, rolled this out within initial 10,000 homeowners, resulting in a 5% savings verified by an independent third party. Finally, since the city has the capability to convey water directly into Kachuma via state water project pipeline, may want to examine whether it would be prudent to fund water conservation programs outside its service area, particularly those towns and cities throughout the Central Valley that have lackluster water conservation programs but may have sufficient supplies. In exchange, you receive wheeled water. These are just three examples I'm interested in. I trust you will give me due consideration for one of the two vacant seats on this longstanding committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, thank you. Great resume. Great. Okay, now on to the Youth Council. Who's first? Come on up. And again, if your name and which school you're from, so we can find you.
Good afternoon, my name is Cindy Diaz, and I go to Dos Pabllos High School. I'd like to be part of the Youth Council because I feel I'd be a great asset due to my difference perspective and responsibility skills. In addition, I'd like to work hand-in-hand with the leaders of my community, such as yourselves, to really make an impact, in hopes to really make a difference in my community. I've gained a lot of skills through my extracurricular activities, volunteer work, and at home. If I were accepted into the Santa Barbara Youth Council, I'd grow very dedicated, and in fact, I've already brainstormed a few ideas I would like to advocate for. Playing basketball and participating in mock trial has really given me an opportunity to gain lifelong skills and friendship, which is something I look forward to gaining in the Youth Council. These activities both require a great deal of teamwork, which links to responsibility, organization, and great communication skills. I've been a counselor at Girl Scout camp since I was in seventh grade, and I've been a Girl Scout since second grade. It's something that really taught me leadership and respect for others. This has taught me that I really need to be something that people can depend on. At home, I have three younger siblings, which means I hold the most responsibilities as the oldest, especially my sister Nicole, who has been diagnosed with cerebral palsy and epilepsy. As a family, we ensure she's fed her meals and medications at the appropriate time. She's also my greatest inspiration to make a difference. I've been exposed to many programs that are beneficial to children and adults in my community, one of which is CCS, California Children's Services. I've seen the impact that it's made firsthand. You know, it offers physical and occupational therapy to all kinds of students, and unfortunately, it's being threatened to be cut down. And I'm very exposed to a lot of families who, you know, are being affected by this. So I know that, you know, if I become part of this council, I'd really like to advocate for programs like that. And I'd like to be the voice of, you know, people in my community, in my neighborhood, and my school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Youth Council, come on up.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Zachary Wells, and I'm a junior at San Marcos High School. Thank you for taking the time to interview me and other candidates for the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I would be honored to be a part of the Youth Council, as it provides the city with teens' perspectives on important issues affecting them in the community, and it provides teens an opportunity to understand how to be a leader in a professional environment. I want to be a part of the Youth Council so that I can serve as a tether between my peers and city legislation, but also so that I can be a part of an organization that works as a team in a fun and unique way. My experience in many types of tutoring will be valuable to the Youth Council. I've accumulated over 1,000 hours of community service, most of which are through tutoring outlets in the Apple Academy at San Marcos High School. In addition, I have been working closely with the Anti-Defamation League in Santa Barbara as a speaker at various community events, representing the National Youth Leadership Mission that I attended in Washington, DC in October of 2014. This work has taught me to speak up for other people when they are being ostracized based on their differences. When I came back from the DC trip, some of my friends were being bullied by other students because of their sexuality, so I coordinated with our school's counselors and advisors and reinstituted a gay-straight alliance that gave my friends and others a safe space to be themselves and be who they want to be at school. Self-expression is such an important quality to one's self-esteem, and it can be fostered not only through safe learning spaces, but also through creative outlets. Through my passionate participation in modern ballet and jazz dance with the State Street Ballet Young Dancers, and through singing in three of my school's choirs, I've come to appreciate the artistic power of expression. You might have even seen me perform at the Grenada and State Street Ballet's Nutcracker. Being one of very few Hispanics and one of very few males as both a dancer and a choreographer, I've learned to accept my differences and the differences in others. I believe that the arts bring a very transformative presence to the youth of Santa Barbara, and that involvement in them improves our well-being. As a member of the Youth Council, I would focus on issues that affect the education and mental health of Santa Barbara's youth in schools. Tackling the barriers that prevent kids from learning, such as students not getting enough one-on-one help in school, and students being sidetracked by drugs and alcohol, are primary concerns of mine. With my tutoring expertise and through my future work with Apple and the Kids Helping Kids organization at San Marcos High School and their tutoring projects, I plan to work harder on helping kids to pass their classes and to be proud of their schoolwork. Furthermore, I have seen too many of my friends turn to substance abuse as a way to manage stress and anxiety. Through my training with the Coalition of Youth Advocates, I've become very aware of the dangers of drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, and have presented to other schools, to community festivals, and to other youth groups about them. Lastly, I know that the Youth Council is a large commitment of time, but if I'm fortunate enough to be selected, I will happily commit the time and energy needed to make it my top priority. The youth of Santa Barbara have so much to contribute to this community. We have untapped energy, ideas, and optimism about the future. Here in Santa Barbara, we are lucky to have such a diverse teen community, and that can contribute so many fresh ideas to making the city a better place. Combined with our youthful energy and your experience, what a great team we could be. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That was Zachary Wells from San Marcos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Santa Barbara City Council. My name is Sophia Bordofsky. I am 16 years old, and next August, I will be a junior at San Marcos High School. I'm here today because I'm applying to be a member of the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I am honored with being appointed to the Youth Council. I will ensure that all my time is dedicated to this, and I will make it my top priority. I feel that I am qualified to serve on the Youth Council because of my passion, my integrity, my love for the community of Santa Barbara, and my leadership experience, which I have gotten from mock trial, the San Marcos Apple Academy, and numerous clubs on my school campus. I want to serve in the Youth Council so that I can work alongside my peers as a team into making Santa Barbara an even better place socially, environmentally, and recreationally for the youth. If I'm appointed to the Youth Council, I would like to promote more support for transgender and other LGBTQA youth in Santa Barbara. I would also like to encourage youth to be more environmentally aware and sustainable, so that we can leave Santa Barbara in even better shape than we arrived in it. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm 15 years old, and my name is Ari Tridic. And next fall, I will be a junior at San Marcos High School.
I'm sorry, your name is?
Ari Tridic.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have been a member of the Santa Barbara Youth Council since seventh grade, devoting many hours and weekends to various events. Along with the Youth Council, I partake in sports at my school, ASV, and mock trial. And I have been very good at managing my time in order to prioritize the Youth Council. I am a good leader, I am patient, open-minded, approachable, and very passionate. I would like to be appointed to the Youth Council because I love helping in my community, having a voice, and working with an amazing group of teens who are motivated academically, athletically, and compassionately. Certain issues that I would like to promote are getting teens more involved in the community, because I feel as if there are many problems that are among the high schools that adults do not know about, that teens can have a say in and voice. I also would like to talk about the education gap, because I feel that is something that is holding several students back from reaching their full potential, and is something that we do not address enough, along with domestically abused teenagers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your service so far. Who's next? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Adam Fuller, and I'm a current sophomore at San Marcos High School. And I'm a third-generation Santa Barbarian, and I love our town. I'm really interested in serving our special community with a position on the Santa Barbara Youth Council. My grandfather has been very involved in Santa Barbara my whole life, and he is currently on the school board. He has taught me that people can make a positive impact by getting involved and working to improve things. People describe me as an interesting balance between serious and fun. I do well in school, and I prioritize my academics, but I also love to play high school and club sports, surf, hike in our mountains, volunteer, and just stay busy having a good time and enjoying life. As an active member of the Apple Academy, which is focused on academics and leadership, I have especially enjoyed tutoring in math and reading for the last two years at Vieja Valley Elementary School. I also work regularly with Challenger Special Needs Sports Teams. This broad range of interests and experiences will enable me to relate with different groups of youth and will allow me to represent a diverse set of needs. As a successful collaborator with the background, skills, and abilities to work well with youth and adults of all different backgrounds, beliefs, and interests, I can get things done, but also have some fun doing it. I am interested in helping the Youth Council work effectively with Santa Barbara City Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I would like to make sure the voice of teens in the community are heard and represent the youth in Santa Barbara by participating and leading community events. I am excited to recognize excellent youth in the community that are doing great things and help with city policies that may affect teens, and find places for kids to go and things for them to do in our town. When youth get involved in leadership at a city level or in any other group, it creates a win-win situation. The organization benefits from the time, energy, and manpower of the individual as programs are creative, events are planned, and tasks are accomplished. And the teen benefits by gaining valuable experience and feeling the pleasure of making a difference and doing a good job. I believe this leads to a stronger community and ultimately better, more conscious, and strong adults. This is what I hope to achieve. If chosen to help on the Santa Barbara Youth Council, areas that specifically interest me are reducing recreational drug use and addressing bullying issues. In addition, the oceans and protection of our watersheds is an important interest of mine. I am a surfer and lifelong ocean lover. I was recently hired by the Santa Barbara Beach Lifeguard Association and to be an aide at the Junior Lifeguard Program. And this makes the ocean and its health of great importance to me and a huge part of Santa Barbara life. A role of the Santa Barbara Youth Council would provide me with an opportunity to give back to the community that has been so good to me, and make it even better for the youth, and allow me to gain some valuable experience that will help me in my future activities, college, and my career as an adult. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Ty Chorowski, and next year, I will be a freshman at Laguna Blanca. I've been a junior member on the Santa Barbara Youth Council volunteering for the last two years, and it has been one of the best times I've had, like, coming from there, from school. It's great. And I've really looked up to the senior members and the seniors in high school right now that have been graduating and gone to college. And I've been there, and I've seen different events that we have put on. And so, and I hope that we will keep doing the Leadership Conference, because it's a great way to introduce the leaders of Santa Barbara to the youth of Santa Barbara, and go over important topics that are very important to the teens. And it's very interesting for me to listen to what the adults have to think about the different issues that are going on for the teens right now in Santa Barbara. Some things that I think that we should approve about the Santa Barbara Youth Council is, for the last two years, we had a buddy system where we've been paired up with city council members and different senior members also in the Youth Council. And we didn't really do a lot this year, and I thought that it would be great to improve the friendships and bonds that should be made with the adults of Santa Barbara and the other members of the council. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you for your volunteer service.
Yes, thank you.
I'll pick on someone. Nope, come on up. It's all good, you can be after.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Daniela Trissler, and I'm currently graduating from Locomber Junior High and going to San Marcos High School next year. And I have served on the junior high subcommittee for a year, and I have really loved it. It has given me a chance to really look at the problems we have in our community. Before I knew about Youth Council, I never really thought of the problems we had in our community, and it never really struck me of how serious we need to solve these problems. And I loved being a part of- solve these problems and I loved being a part of helping this community and I love how we had a Leadership Conference. It really brought together all the youth from the community and showed all the important problems we have. And at the Leadership Conference, I got together about twenty of my peers and got them to come and I feel like I love doing that because many of them came up to me after and told me that it encouraged them to get more involved in the community. And I love that I got to let them experience how many problems we have in our community, but how we can solve them and how fun I've had in the Youth Council. And I just love solving the problems that we've had and I have, it has brought to my attention many problems, even at my school at Junior High, how there's many drug abuse and alcohol abuse and I know we've had many assemblies about that in Junior High and in high school and it's been a big problem that we've been trying to solve, but as the years have been continuing, there has been more drug abuse, more alcohol abuse. I've known at least twenty of my peers from my school who have been doing drugs and alcohol and they're just thirteen and fourteen and I can't imagine how many high schoolers are doing it because of all the high school work they have and how much pressure they're having. And that is one of the problems I would love to solve next year if I get appointed to Youth Council. And I would just love to be on the Youth Council in the following years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Grace Ingram, I'm sixteen and I'm going to be a junior next fall at San Marcos High School. When presented with the opportunity from my high school counselor to apply for the Santa Barbara Youth Council, I was so excited. I've always gravitated towards positions where I'm able to be a leader, be a team player and advocate for others. This year I was president of Young Americans for Freedom Club at my high school. I also was in Aha Peace Builders as well as Autism Awareness Club and our school leadership class. In these organizations, I've learned to look at issues from different perspectives and to really weigh all options before you really decide how to approach something and to also work well with other people and even just simple things as public speaking. I want to be part of the Youth Council because I think I could bring a unique perspective to it and I also think it is such an amazing way to be able to serve my community, to be able to be a link between the adult leaders and the teens in our community and deal with issues and help solve issues that many teens face. Some issues or examples of issues are anti-bullying. This year, just within my one year with Peace Builders, I learned a lot about building connections and doing things like connection circles and I've really seen the impact they've made just in one-on-run relationships and in groups on campus. Another issue I would like to start focusing on is being able to provide places for teens to come and deal with things like stress and anxiety in a positive way. Being a teen, a lot of people, sometimes we don't really give it enough credit, but it can be really tough. High school can be really tough. And I think if teens had a better, a more positive way to be able to channel all the stress and anxiety that they deal with in a way that wouldn't be harmful to themselves or to the community would be really great and we would really have a much stronger group of teens. And yes, just another, to go over what I'm also involved in, I play soccer and lacrosse at San Marcos. I was in leadership, I'm going to be Vice President of Autism Awareness Club and Autism Awareness is something that I'm really passionate about as well. My mother was really involved with the Walk Now for Autism for the years that it was here and it's been something I've been involved with since I was a little kid. I'm also heavily involved with Young Americas Foundation, which they have the Reagan Ranch Center by the train station. I am President of Young Americas Foundation Club at my school and then I also attend their conferences. And then in addition to that, this summer I will be interning for that foundation, which is typically a position held only by college students. And yeah, that's basically everything I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Spivak and I'm a sophomore at San Marcos High School. And first off, the Monday meeting schedule works really well with my schedule currently, so that wouldn't be a problem. And if there is a conflict, then of course I'll have to choose my priorities and Youth Council would be high on the list. So, what I know about Youth Council is that it's a group of motivated students who work with the City Council on projects to improve the city. It seems like a great opportunity to learn about real-world jobs in society as well as good leadership practice. Some skills I possess that would make me a good candidate for this position is leadership. I've learned leadership through school, sports, being in the Apple Academy and just socially. I feel very comfortable in a leadership role, but also especially through sports, I've learned how to like play a role in a position when I'm not always be the leader. So, that can be really helpful, especially when other people have good ideas and stuff. I really like working with teams, so that's why I'd want to be on the Youth Council. Other experience and skills I have is motivation and efficiency. I'm very motivated with everything I do, whether I'm interested in it or not. I always do my best and I'm very efficient. I feel like we don't have all the time in the world, so there's no reason to waste it. So, I like to get things done quickly, but do them well, definitely. Reasons why I want to be appointed is because I feel it would be good leadership practice, but more importantly, real-world experience. In school, we learn about the rein of the Mongols or Sinusidal Graphs and that's cool, but we're not realistically going to apply that in real life. So, I feel that working on a council, especially for the city, would be a really good experience and really good opportunity to learn about the real world and real jobs. So, that's one of the main reasons why I'm interested in this. Additionally, I really like being on teams, just working with people, whether it's peers, adults, whatever. I love working in groups and getting things done and setting goals and meeting them. And finally, it seems interesting. I don't really have any certain issues that I want to address, but I know that once I am on the Youth Council, then quickly I would see things and learn about things that I'd like to improve and whatever the topic is, whatever the project we're working on, I know I'll be able to get on top of it and like get into it and do a good job on it, especially working as a team. And in addition, I really like to like make friends with everyone, so I know I'd get along really well with all the kids on the council. So, overall, I feel that I would be a really good candidate for it and it would be a really good experience for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Schneider and City Council Members. My name is Kevin Acuna and I am currently a ninth grader at San Marcos. This fall, I'll be a tenth grader. I heard about the Youth Council from my dad, who told me that it was a great place to learn leadership skills and be an advocate for others. Since those are some things that interest me, I decided to apply. I also heard that they help solve some issues that teens face. One issue that really deeply bothers me at school is the use of drugs because it seems like there's a heavy presence and I've had a lot of experiences where drugs were involved. And also, I wanted to be with a group that could help prevent other people from having negative experiences with drugs like that. And I've also heard that they do other things like anti-bullying and since I've been a victim of bullying in the past, that also affected me and I want to be a part of that as well. Generally, I am a shy person and I'm not really known to speak, so I would also like to join the Youth Council to help grow as a leader. I recently decided that I wanted to be an English teacher. Since I do volunteer work, I've done in the past Safety Town and helped kids with their homework at Vieja Valley and the Homework Club. And being able to speak publicly will help me be an advocate for others. I am able and willing to attend the, all the activities that the Youth Council does because I'm currently not on any outside clubs or programs that would restrict me. I am a member of the Santa Barbara Swim Club and I do volunteer work in the summer, like I said, Safety Town. This summer, I'm going to be volunteering for the UCSB like Day Camp, but I can control my time on that, so it's not really a problem. Some talents that I believe I could bring to the Youth Council is my creativity because I love to draw and write, so that could help me come up with new programs or make flyers or send letters to when they need to be sent or when flyers need to be made. And I'm also, I'm also, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, so that's kind of why.
You're doing great.
I'm also, I'm also a really kind, I'm really kind, so if people have a problem, I'm usually open to speak. So, since I want to also grow as an advocate for others, I think that could be very inclusive to helping. And I would really love the opportunity to be a member of the Youth Council and if you select me, I promise that I will not only put forth my best effort, but I swear to uphold the rules, expectations and guidelines of being a Youth Council member. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sophia Chin and I'm sixteen years old and this fall I'll be a junior at Dos Pueblos High School. Currently, I'm actively involved in the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy and within the Engineering Academy, I am part of their business team, in particular their grant writing team. And it was a very rewarding experience for me to be able to participate in this team as I was able to give back to the DPEA one-third of the funds that they could give to the students. In addition to participating in the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy, I've also been actively involved in many programs and community services. I once participated in the Tech Trek Summer Program of the American Association of the University of the Woman in the past. My participation in the program enabled me to work with the group and helped develop my leadership and interpersonal communication skills. In addition, I serve as one of two team board members at the YMCA. And as a team board member, I participate in monthly meetings to develop solutions from problems that can benefit everyone. For example, we try to build a solution to the overcrowded parking lot. In addition to that, we also look at this month's financials, membership statistics, feedback from members and brainstorm upcoming activities, for example, our Spring Family Fun Day. In addition to being a team board member, I also participate in the YMCA's yearly Youth and Family Campaign. I've been participating in this campaign for the past two years now and it was very rewarding to be able to raise over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in just three months and give back to people who can't afford to participate in the YMCA and in their programs. In addition to the YMCA, I'm also the president and founder of the Girls for Change Club at Dos Pueblos High School. The Girls for Change Club is a national organization that can empower girls to create social change, both in STEM-related careers and in their personal life. I'm also the president of the National Art Honor Society, which is a program that can inspire and recognize students who have shown a standing ability and interest in art. I'm also a member of the National Honor Society and California Scholarship Federation. My participation in that program has enriched my leadership and time management skills and abilities. I believe that I have the skills necessary to participate in this council successfully. I have experience with making decisions and discussing strategies from being team board and committee member at the YMCA. I have excellent multitasking, communication and leadership skills I developed from actively participating in many extracurriculars, clubs and community services. My previous participation in Girls for Change Club as president, National Art Honor Society as president and other curriculums has enabled me to accumulate a good amount of knowledge and skills, which I believe I could use as a youth member. I am adaptable and flexible and like to execute my plans in accordance with my peers' abilities to accomplish the best solution possible. I've worked in teams for many years, again, as a team board member at YMCA and a lead captain for their annual YMCA Youth and Family Campaign. Through being receptive to change and having a flexible way to adjust to different perspectives, I've been able to achieve great results for the teams I've worked for. Thank you and I hope, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Guitacho. I am in eighth grade. I will be attending, at Lachlan Junior High, I will be attending Dos Pueblos High School for ninth grade. I've been on the Youth Council as a junior high representative for two years ever since the beginning of seventh grade. I heard about it from my sister, Eleni Guitacho, who was actually the secretary for Youth Council for, I believe, four years. And she would always tell me about how, about the people that she got to work with and the amazing teens that she had worked with on the council and all the new people that she'd met that gave her a really good perspective on how, what our youth is in Santa Barbara. And before she told me about all this, I had no idea what was really going on around me. Well, yeah, and so when I joined in seventh grade, I got to see how the Youth Council operates and what it meant to be a Youth Council member. Even though I was a non-voting member, I still got to voice my opinion more and more as the year progressed. And sorry. I got to work with a group of amazing teenagers who had, who were great role models with great leadership skills and together we did many things, like we had a leadership conference where I got to present to a group of twenty junior high members about positive peer pressure. And after the event, they came and told me how their eyes were opened because not many people really know that there is positive peer pressure. My dad is, he owns a gas station, so when I first joined the Youth Council, I didn't really have a very good sense of scheduling or time. So, and when I joined, I was literally fresh out of sixth grade, so I was still, I guess, pretty immature. And my dad helped me to, my dad helped me to schedule myself and be organized and I'll admit, I am still learning, but I've come to be even more greatly organized person than I was before through the Youth Council.
Great, thank you. We're still learning about that too, so don't worry about it.
Thank you, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Michelle Chin. I'm currently an eighth grader at Lachlan Junior High School and I will be going to Dos Pueblos High School this coming fall. I am a dependable and hard-working student with excellent communication and multitasking skills, which I developed from previous schools, extracurricular activities and leadership experiences. When being a student at Monavista Elementary School, I was a representative on the Student Council in grades four through six. After that, I served as the seventh grade president of the Lachlan ASB or Associated Student Body Cabinet. In eighth grade, I was selected as the ASB president. As ASB president, I work in a leadership team involved in school events, SciCouncil, PTSA meetings, House of Representatives activities and so on. In fourth through eighth grade, I worked with Math Super Bowl and Math Counts teams and in the seventh grade, I was selected as a participant with a scholarship in the Tech Trek Science and Math Cam for Girls, which is sponsored by AAUW. During that time, I collaborated with a team to build a science project. In seventh through eighth grade, I was accepted into the Merit Program, which is a scholarship musical program, where I played the piano in a chamber ensemble with other musicians. In eighth grade, I participated at a Latin car care competition with a team. In addition, I have been on the YMCA Gator Swim Team for over five years and I've been taking Chinese classes for two years. And I am always willing and able to skip a class or swim team lesson in order to devote the time necessary to serve if appointed to the Santa Barbara Youth Council. As a result from being a leader for Student Council, ASB and several academic teams, I've gained useful teamwork experiences and developed leadership skills, particularly the abilities to accomplish assignments effectively and efficiently and to take necessary actions while maintaining a performative and to take necessary actions while maintaining a professional appearance, attitude and demeanor. Santa Barbara is a phenomenal city and it has the capability and potential to be even better. By serving as a member in the Santa Barbara Youth Council, I will have the opportunity to play an important part in helping our city move towards our goal of pushing our limits, increasing our bests and improving our strengths. Ultimately, I'm an enthusiastic and strongly motivated student who has high goals, which I am determined to achieve through hard work, dedication and persistence. I care about details and problem-solving and I enjoy interacting with people and welcome constructive criticisms to improve my overall work. I love Santa Barbara and I hope I will have the opportunity to serve as a member of the Santa Barbara Youth Council who has to better contribute in the improvements of our beautiful city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's, is that everyone? No, there's one more, right? One or two more? Two more. Okay. Great. Hi.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Ally Michaels and I'm going to be a senior at Bishop Diego High School next year. I feel that it's, it's crucial to encourage teens to get involved in our community. As you all know, teens love to complain and I would love to encourage teens to be active instead of sitting back and watching things happen. I'm passionate about serving others and have accumulated more than 900 community service hours over the years. I'm involved in the performing arts and when I went to Bishop, I learned that we had no arts department. Instead of sitting back and taking it, I proposed an idea to put on a full-scale musical review show at my school to raise money for a future musical theater department. So, I did so and I directed, choreographed and performed in our show called Spotlight. And I led a 30-person cast to the show, which performed at the Victoria Hall Theater and raised money for our school. And it was a great learning experience. It really taught me teamwork, how to work with others, how to work with my peers and how to lead, but also be a listener and be concerned with how others are doing. And so, I feel that it is important to be an example for those around me and to be the change that I wish to see, but also encourage them to be leaders and to do exactly what they would like to do, like to see in their school, their community at home, whatever that may be. Let's see. I love being the example and I feel that we should work together and support our community and our school and our peers. I have been involved in ASB for the last three years and I will be the head chair of ASB next year. I was named Global Leadership Connections student, or here's the exact title, Female Student Leader of the Year, Santa Barbara Female Student Leader of the Year this year. And I will be going to Washington DC for a conference this year and I'm very excited about that. And I'm also president of the Youth for Direct Relief Club and an ambassador for Autism Speaks. And I would love to serve on this committee and improve teens' involvement in our community and become aware of the issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least.
Hi, my name is Corinne Cortez and I attend Santa Barbara High School, finishing up my junior year and I'm now entering my senior year in the fall. So, what interested me about youth council is reaching out into the community. I've been in a variety of clubs and programs of, of clubs and programs called Friday Night Live, the Global Leadership Council, ASB, the Anti-Defamation League and Reconnecting Youth, Youth or RY. Those helped me become more self-expressed, find things I never knew about myself and using my voice instead of having someone else speak for me. A problem that I want to upbring is parent and teen communications. In all honesty, in all honesty, I never had that and I went through much emotional abuse from my parents and I was scared to talk to anyone about it because no one really kind of knows what I'm going through. It's hard enough going home with the same routine, but it's even worse when I say it from my peers. And what I want is to break that wall and bring families much more closer than before. I'm a well-rounded guy, I'm a well-rounded, open-minded guy, still recovering from much physical and emotional pain, but with a group of confident teens wanting to make change, I see no reason why I should just sit back and watch.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, that was impressive. I think Santa Barbara's in good hands. So, we have a tough choice to make in a couple of weeks. All right, so that's it for that item. Any council member committee assignment reports? Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Baroness Jewelers for sponsoring a fundraiser for our rental housing mediation program. As you know, Andrea Bafano, the staff member, her mom has, owns that business and they raised money over the weekend for the program. So, just as the council directed, the group does some of their own fundraising. Thank you.
Great. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the water commission meeting yesterday, which was a very long one. The drought update, of course. Maybe that was the, the length of the meeting might have helped. The rain dance at the end may be what we're benefiting from today. One tough problem that I think we've heard a bit about, but is, is the delay in the reclaimed water system, which the filters that were ordered for that system were, were not, not workable. And so, there's been a something like a four-month delay in, in the operation, the operability of that system. I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that soon. And then on a, on a, on a happy note, one of our, one of our water commissioners retired yesterday after 16 years of service, Jim Smith. Did a long stint of duty, had, to everyone's recollection, the best attendance record of, of any of the water commissioners, but obviously a a dedicated member of our team and now we'll be confronting, obviously, a wonderful dilemma. It's, it's really impressive to see the, the group of folks that are offering their services to, to take his place.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn to Monday, June 15th at 1:00 PM, 3740 Pescadero Drive to look at a tree. So, with that, we are adjourned.